Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Select Board meeting. I just got back from my short vacation, so if I seem a little not here, I'm still on vacation probably, so don't worry about it. One of my Select Board members will get me going. So make a quick note here.
Can I get the video?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll get started. So we have our consent agenda tonight. We have the minutes from September 30th. Warrant 18, 18S, 18A, and 31. We had the Bay State Municipal Accounting Group contract, vote to sign that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have no appointments tonight, and is there anybody here for our open public comment period?
Are you probably running the agenda?
You're actually on the agenda. So, no public comment? Okay. So before we start the agenda, I know we're going to talk about meetings coming up.
Excuse me, I have to... Is this about the town meeting, Lauren?
Yes.
I was looking for the 2016 budget as it had been approved at the spring meeting, and I couldn't find it. It doesn't seem to be posted anywhere.
I actually spoke to this lady this morning, and what we have posted online is the doings, which just has the actual amounts. I'm more than happy for my view with an itemized copy, as I told you on the phone today. It's not actually posted on there. It's like a three-page over the line items of every single item. I normally don't put that online. It's in the permanent record book, but it's not on the online version. But I can get you that.
Can you post that?
Well, she'll just give it to you.
But I mean...
I'm more than happy to take your question, if that's what any people are looking for. I'd absolutely do that.
What, you can post it? I think it should be posted before the...
This is town... They're asking for what was actually passed doing at the last county.
Yeah, whatever the official budget is right now, line item.
Well, there is no... Actually, there is no line item. We vote a budget. The line item is something else we use internally, and it's only what... That's not the official vote. Official vote is the...
Correct.
Is the items.
It's the by-estimate.
Not the items, the actual totals. General fund, so much. Water enterprise, so much. Sewer enterprise, so much. That's how it's... That's what's actually voted. You see it when you come to town meeting, broken down lines, but that's not truly what's voted. What's voted and what's posted is the actual vote, which are those numbers combined. So if you want the line item numbers, the clerk's willing to get that for you separately.
I'm actually going to... I don't understand why we wouldn't just post it on the website.
Well, if we posted the budget separately from the clerk's page, we could do that. But in the clerk's page, he's posting only what's officially...
Only under warrants and then the doings. The doings is more of a simple version...
Right.
...of everything that was voted at town meeting.
Yeah, no, I completely understand what you're doing, Jess. I'm just saying, shouldn't we have...
So if we wanted to post it, we'd have to post it somewhere else, under like the Select Board.
Right, and it would normally be under like Town Accountant or Town Administrator.
Somewhere, town, yeah.
So that's what you... You just want it on the website somewhere. Somewhere that it's easy to find, where people can find it if they want to look for it.
I'm not going to guarantee it's easy to find.
Well, why not call it "the budget" or "town meeting"...
We can...
Or "town meeting" or something.
Yeah, we can post this thing. This is not a problem. I was just doing a little fishing around in our website, and I see the aggregate number, but you're looking for the detail, and we can do that for you. Probably give you a copy of it before you leave the building tonight.
What some people think is an easy-to-understand website?
Of course, yeah.
Someone always says they can't understand it or find something, so my new term for people is it's on the website.
Well, it should be easy to find. I mean, I know, I think you're working on a system to make the whole budget more accessible and have it correct. Exactly, right, exactly. So, I mean, until that's in place, though, at least having it somewhere. Yeah, I agree.
Although I think you're missing the point. Everyone thinks websites are easy.
I totally had your point.
Okay.
No, but I see websites where you can find a budget much more easily, and it's not that hard.
Okay, so, before we start, so the school committee wants us to... Wants to do their spot at their November 2nd school committee meeting, so they can have everything there. I cannot attend the November 2nd meeting.
I'm out of town.
That's a Monday. Can I work... Can I deny?
To be determined, I don't know.
Okay, so I'll let them know that doesn't work for...
Can they... It must be completed.
I am. That's why I'm asking.
Can they send it to us?
I'll see. I'll tell them the second doesn't work for us, and then...
But if we could get it in advance, too, it'd be helpful, because I've been imagining there's a somewhat more detail than other town departments.
Are we having a... Maybe a tri-board meeting on that Wednesday?
I think we're going to talk about that today.
The first Wednesday, so I mean, if we could have it for the night here.
We still have some of our town departments in due, leftover.
Right, so you've got Human Services and Culture and Recreation are still to be done.
Okay. So, with that being said, we'll go ahead and start old business, and our first old business is to take our formal vote to lay out Laurel Drive and Holly Road. So...
So we did the site visit to both Laurel Drive and Holly Road last Thursday. Ms. Keegan was good enough to be representing the Select Board. Mike Klemoski was there, Randy Iser, myself. We were met by residents of both roads at both locations. We drove or walked the length of each road, and it seems pretty straightforward. There was a question lingering from the last meeting about the ownership of Holly Road, and it was confirmed that Mr. Roberts is now representing, that he does not own Holly Road.
Okay.
So who does?
We need to figure it out. Or someone needs to figure it out.
I thought we were represented that he did own it. We were.
I spoke to him, and he said that he had spoken to his attorney, Peter McConnell, and that he does not own the road. As soon as the last part of parcel was sold, it reverts to the owners on either side of it, whoever fronts the road. At the walk-through, Randy said that they could pre... Oh, and Peter also said that you guys could just take the road by virtual Watson County Registry of Deeds, because all these folks have done title searches, and banks have done title searches, and some of these houses have been sold three and four and five times, and the title searches have been at infinitum. And he said, "All you have to do is take the road," just like they did in Northampton.
So you had a conversation...
So I talked to the city of Northampton. They took about 20 to 25 roads at one point. Some of these roads, the owners were truly unknown. They've been roads in place for a very long time. There were utilities placed down the roads somewhat akin to what we have with the sewer easement on Holly Road. And so long as they had a plan, which we do for Holly Road, they were able to go ahead and take the road by eminent domain.
So is there any preference in how we do this?
I...
My preference...
Well, I was going to say, I mean, there are two options. One is to go ahead and pay the cost of having a title search done, right? Or do it by eminent domain. So I guess my question is, at this point, you know, how much risk are we at by not doing a title search? Although it seems pretty minimal, based on the input from the planning board, Mike Klemoski, Barry Roberts. I mean, I would think that we have the least resistance, unless somebody says that there is more risk that I'm not understanding, but be to take it by eminent domain, we'd just be done with it.
I have a quick question, please.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dwyer, I realize you're here tonight and part of the planning board, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't ask you. It's not my understanding that when the last lot is sold on a road currently, that the build that the... To the center of the road is owned by the people on the street. Can you tell me if that's true today?
Generally not, because more people are aware of something called the derelict fee statute. But that is part of Mass General laws, and it does say that if, on private property, if a lot is described as running along a street, then ownership goes to the center of the street. That was the way it was done historically, and the derelict fee was... Statute was in there to get the Barry Roberts of the world out of the picture. They didn't want to have someone hanging on to a road just without any real interest in any of the adjoining property. But it depends entirely on how you word the deed. I did a spot check of deeds on Holly Road, and all of the ones that I came across did describe it as being along the road, which meant that title passed to the center of the road. Now, that doesn't apply in every circumstance. If you were to do a deed of today being along Route 9, you don't get titled to the center of Route 9, because you, as in the butter, don't own it. But a developer, when he lays something out, has to be careful in how those first deeds go out. And we have the flip side of the issue on some other streets, where the developer did retain the rights to the road then, but is now gone. But in this case, yes, the... Under the standards and practices of the time when this was laid out, things were done with less precision than we would have liked to see today.
Thank you.
So my preference is to go ahead and do the deed search now. Two reasons. One, we have members who... Residents of the street who have been told... Who have told us, they never even knew the street was a private way. They always were told it was a public way. So if someone actually did a deed, title search, and they came up with the fact that it was a public way, I question that title search and that transfer. So I would like to know completely now what it is. Second, I think we should do a title search, because our attorneys are going to probably make us do a title search, even if we take it by eminent domain. So we might as well just get it out of the way and have it resolved now.
Could I add one more point? I did speak with Joel Bard at some length about this, and there is a middle ground whereby the town can lay out the road, but not actually take it. Just say it is now a public way. And you might want to discuss that in more detail with town council. I don't think that necessarily affects your vote today to lay out the road, but you might want to just get a little more detail on that as an option. Joel said that in some parts, especially of eastern Massachusetts, where the roads have been in existence for 300 and 400 years, the ownership is a little murky in some areas.
So the vote today is predicated upon a town meeting acceptance. So your vote today can occur and should occur, because we're down to the 11th hour with respect to the legal timing. We have to take the vote and then turn the paperwork over to Ms. Becknebel tonight in order to have even the opportunity of having a valid vote at town meeting. Taking the vote tonight is predicated upon a town meeting acceptance. So far as I know, there's no timeline that would expire if you took your vote and then, for some, whatever reason, you couldn't take a vote next Thursday night on this... On either of these roads, and then defer to the spring town meeting.
So meaning that we could vote on it tonight, continue to authorize you to have discussion with our town council...
Right, right.
And get all of that cleared up between now and October 22nd?
Right.
And if on October 22nd, it's not a favorable or clear-cut pathway...
Right.
Then we would explain that at town meeting.
Right. But no vote tonight means no vote next Thursday.
So, does the board understand?
I don't understand what a vote to lay out means.
A vote just means we accept the lines that were shown on the plan, which we do have, and we accept that the road is where it's... They say it is, basically. Maybe Mr. Dwyer might want to add something to that?
That was a very good summary.
Thank you.
Just to kind of hit the same thing again, is that when surveyors surveyed to put the sewer in, they surveyed it to the pins that were there. So the street's layout is the street's layout. The town accepted it to put the sewer in.
We accepted where the sewer went, yes.
Yeah. So you accepted the shape of the street.
We didn't accept this... I don't think the sewer plan actually shows the whole street as being where the sewer goes. I think the sewer is only shown where there's sewer easement, is what I understand, that runs down the street. So we accepted that sewer easement as being where the sewer is, not the street.
Well, yeah, and the storm drains are placed on the side of the road. So you kind of said, "Well, this is the side of the road." Somebody said, "Well, somebody feet from here is where this storm drain is going to be," and it happened to be the side of the road, so...
I understand. So is there any other questions or concerns? We're going to take maybe a vote tonight to lay out the roads and keep this moving forward.
Are we voting individually or collectively? Are we doing a separate vote for Laurel and a separate vote for Holly?
However the motion's come. I'll take them either way.
Okay, then I'm...
Then can we continue? There's other issues after that vote is taken?
No, there's not other issues. There's another step. The other step is to go to town meeting.
No, I mean, I want to speak to the issue of the title search. Would now be the time or after you take this vote?
Well, if you want it on the agenda for next week, we have to take the vote.
No, no, I just mean now, this whole...
Go ahead.
The discussion of title search.
I'm okay, just go ahead and do it now.
Because this has been a hot mess, and it's been eight months now, and it looks like we're going to miss another town meeting deadline on this. The way Northampton did it, according to what Peter McConnell told me, is that they did a very abbreviated title search, which might be able to happen before town meeting. And they just did the current owners. They just verified the current owners and any steps that had been taken under the current ownership, and that was it. And, you know, identified the banks that would need to be notified of it taking. And the town... I believe their solicitor did it, and it was quick, because it's just... You know, it's not a 20-year search, it's not a 40-year search. And that might actually be able to happen in a week, whereas the full title search is probably won't, and we're going to... We would miss another opportunity at town meeting.
So, I understand that, but being... You can hit me anytime you want to. I understand that, but we've asked several times for proof to come forward, and we've been told different things from the members who live on the street.
Maybe you've been told different things, right?
So, please let me finish talking. We talked one time about the members of the street providing the title searches and going ahead and doing part of this and getting it moving forward, so that we can show to the members of Hadley that you are progressing and pushing forward this project as much as the rest of the... You know, that you're actually supporting this and putting something into this project, which never came forward. We have been told different things as well about this street. So I am really leery about doing this, a very short title search, and I'm going to leave it to our town council, that he can direct whoever on his staff to do a full title search and do whatever they need to, whatever they feel is comfortable with this. If it misses, it misses. If it makes it, it makes it. I believe it'll make it. Complimenting Paige, is pretty good at doing this. I assume they're going to get it all done for town meeting. So with that being said, I believe we'll go to our attorneys, ask them to do a title search, and get everything lined up for the 22nd. And I believe they'll have it for us, a yea or a nay about the title. My point, still being said, is some people in this room who live on this street have come forward and said they thought... They were told they'd purchased a house on a public way, which is not the case and which needs to be resolved. So the vote tonight, we'll move this forward, which has to be done whether you had a clean title or not. We have to take the vote tonight to lay out the road, and we will take that vote and move forward. And our town council will move forward with what they need to do.
When you're talking about title search, do you mean title search of the road?
It'll be a title search of the properties, yes.
All the properties.
And I believe it'll be up to the town council to determine how thorough that needs to be.
Well, I was just going to say, I think we want to be clear here. First, I mean, the five of us need to... Four. The four of us need to vote tonight and direct council. And my personal opinion is that I would defer to our town council's recommendation on how best to proceed. If he believes there's enough risk that a full-blown title search is necessary, then of course, that's what we would want to do to protect the town. On the other hand, if Joel comes back and he's comfortable doing an accelerated abbreviated or whatever, you know, search and pursuing eminent domain, I would also be comfortable with that. So I don't want to jump over the recommendation and direct town council specifically. It sounded like you were being a little bit more specific, saying you would... You only want a full title search.
I personally want to see as much information as he's going to give me, and I'm really questioning a lot of the... A lot of what's going on. So whatever, Joel, I mean, I will defer to town council. If town council says, "This is it, good, go," I'm fine with that.
Because that was the motion I was going to make. I was going to word it that with direction from town council.
So any more discussion? I think someone's ready to make a motion.
Okay. So I want to make a motion to accept... What are we, the layout?
Yes.
Accept the layout of both Holly and Laurel Drive with the condition that to ensure that we have clear titled to Holly Road, that we've been asked the town administrator to discuss the matter with town council and defer to his recommendation for further action to assure us clear title.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just a friendly amendment to incorporate by reference the formal language of both layouts into the record.
Well said.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're moving forward. We're still on track. We'll move this to the line, keep it going at town meeting. So you're here for us to sign something?
Yeah, so bridge it, the layouts. Layout letters need to be signed, and then we need to transmit them to the clerk tonight.
So while we take a moment to sign that?
I just hope that they knew that even if, for some reason, it didn't get to town meeting this Thursday, that your road would still be plowed and taken care of during the winter months, as it has been.
Well, that's... Patching is the question. The plows are... I mean, Ms. Keegan was there and saw it, as is the town administrator. It's terrible. And even the DPW, Mike, is concerned about the plows are going to do to go down that road, to plow it. I mean, you guys are an owner, too, of that road, because you have owned a piece of property. So just like we own to the middle of the road, you own to the middle of the cul-de-sac. So as owners also, you can go up and down that road as many times as you want to, but it is in such poor shape. The plows, as I said, Mike said, I'm just concerned that the plows are going to get ripped up going up and down that road. And children have to walk up that road to go to school every day and get the bus. So if you're just going to plow...
But how long have you been living there?
Six years.
And...
I never knew it was a private way.
Your deed search never told you that was a private way?
No, we even went down to the attorney. Attorney Aban, he said, "It doesn't say that this is a private road."
I'm the first owner, other than Ken Parker, that's got furniture on that road, and I was never told that that was a private road.
But you have been maintaining it for the last 45 years.
That was my uncle and my cousin.
Since 1970. It's been patched, and it's been plowed. And apparently, in the last two years, as Mike told me from the DPW, they took the money to patch the road, and it was diverted to another place. These are his words, not mine. The money was diverted, so therefore, there is no money in the budget to help patch the road, which I can understand, except that now we have a road that is, as you saw, terrible. Huge potholes, from the top to the bottom. And as residents, we have nothing, except we could buy a $16 bag of cold patch and try to patch them.
Which Mike doesn't take as a great idea.
Which Mike doesn't want, because it will rip up the plows even more.
Mr. Roberts may have some suggestions for you.
No, he doesn't own the road. No, I think the town... I would ask that the town take responsibility to patch it this winter, before you start plowing it. It's terrible. I mean, we're trying to figure out how to meet in the middle.
So I think we're moving along in how to meet in the middle. I think this is the way to go, to accept the road, to formally accept the road. It's been brought to our attention as a public way. Rest to continue to expend public funds on something that's private until we resolve the private-public issue is what we need to do, and we're heading down that road. We'll go to town meeting, we'll resolve the issue, and then move forward.
If it's accepted there, if it's... I mean, Ms. Keegan, even if it isn't...
So one step at a time.
Yes.
We need...
Right, we're trying to move from... Well, if it doesn't get to town, you'll still plow it. You won't patch it. You won't help us. Well, wait, that's... Then we'll have the discussion about the patching.
Right, that's not on the discussion right now. So one step at a time. We're just trying to...
So if we don't go to town meeting, we can come back and ask for help to patch it?
Sure.
Well, you're going to town meeting.
Yeah, because I think you want to go to town meeting.
Yes.
You're going to town meeting. If you don't get accepted, then you can come back and talk to us, yes.
But if the town speaks loudly that they don't want to accept that road, that's your road. Just perfectly clear, if the town speaks on town meeting floor and says that they do not choose to accept the road in the condition that it's in, then you have something that you need to think about.
Right, and the town is also an owner. The town is also an owner. So if something happens, which, as the attorney for Barry Roberts said, not only will they go after each one of us, but they will go after the town, who has the deepest pockets involved, as far as liability. This is Barry Roberts' attorney saying.
I was going to say, our pockets aren't too deep right now.
No, but the liability is. The liability, because you're an owner. You're an owner, just like I'm an owner, of Holly Road.
The sewer funds owner are Holly Road, yes.
Well, whoever owns that piece of parcel that you paid $10,000 for, where the pump station is on.
We understand that.
We really understand. Okay, we just have to take this in a logical way.
Can we also understand... I would like to understand what Mr. Dwyer had said about it becoming a public way if it's not taken.
What I said was that town council had suggested there is a process for laying out the road without necessarily taking... It's something short of eminent domain. You just lay out and say, "This is now a public way." And I did not go into all of the details with Mr. Bard about all of the ramifications of that, but he just suggested it as a... Another way to approach it.
At the discretion of the... At the discretion of the town.
Correct.
So that would be something that we would have to initiate.
You vote to lay it out, the town votes to approve your layout, but you don't necessarily, it's apparently some sort of a middle ground where you're just saying, this is where the road is, and officially recognizing it. But I defer to town council for more information on that. It's not an issue that we have ever dealt with directly on the planning board, other than in this context.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so everyone here is for Holly over here, right? Okay. So we want to talk about the North Hadley Hall RFP?
Sure.
Have we been dismissed?
No, unless you have something else to say about it.
No, you're welcome to stay.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't here for something else. I think I'll skip that for now. So we have the draft of the RFP. It's still, it's still probably be in draft form for a little while because we still have to resolve a couple of issues in the historic preservation restrictions.
So do we have an update on that?
They're, they're in, they just need to make some decisions. The, and what they have in is what you have in the packet. And those decisions they have to make are the parts that are kind of highlighted in here.
What about the ones with question marks?
In the historic preservation.
Not just in the RFP itself?
In the RFP, that's us to figure out.
Okay.
So as we talk about the sale of this property, we have a couple of things going on.
How about we start with the minimum price?
That was, did you notice that it was set before for 428 on this buy-sell thing? There was a price on it for 428?
428, 400?
Yeah.
And I'm not really sure that's the way we say it. We say the assessed value or the appraised value is 428, not the minimum price.
Well, the minimum proposal price.
Page number three.
So you're going to reject all prices that are.
That's, that's a decision that you all get to make. You can set a minimum price. You have to declare a price or a value for the property.
But you could still vote for lower.
But the point is, well, this deters somebody.
It will deter people from providing a proposal.
Or should we merely provide?
Assessed value.
The current assessed value is.
Right, so that's, that's the decision point right here is, are you, by law, you have to set a value for the property. You don't have to make your, tell the people that you will accept only bids equal or higher than that. You can take bids lower than that. But some people feel that this is, that you're just asking for a really low price. And here, you're trying to get the highest value for the taxpayers.
I would like to see the verbiage changed there to the assessed value is 428,000.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that or?
That's, that's a discussion.
So the deadline, we'll fill that in, we'll get more information.
Yep.
The next town meeting this will go to will be annual town meeting.
Okay.
On page three. There's some other, so my next comment is, the contract will be awarded. So we'll actually execute a purchase and sale agreement first, will we not? So there will, there'll be a purchase and sale agreement and we'll say we'll negotiate that within, we have to.
Thirty days.
Yeah, it's either, thirty days is kind of quick.
That seems close, 45, 45?
How about?
Sixty?
I was thinking 60.
Well, let's not drag this out.
No, but you know, you get lawyers involved, they say, yeah.
Forty-five.
Forty-five is good.
Well, let's, let's reach out to an impartial lawyer in the audience. Would 60 days be a good number?
I think 60 days is probably more than you need, but it's not bad to put it outside the limit.
Forty-five.
Sixty days.
Forty-five is good, right?
So the, the actual provision here is 30 days with an option to extend for an additional 45 days. So you have 75 days here.
Well, let's not do 60 then.
Okay, so we'll leave it at 30 and then leave the option, but this is for the purchase and sale agreement.
Purchase and sale agreement, right.
So, page four, my only question is down here, next to last paragraph. The proposal price shall be, prices submitted shall remain firm until the purchase and sale is signed. Because once we sign that, we're locked in, then we can only break that based on what we agreed to in the purchase and sale.
Good idea.
And then.
And then we have to change the minimum proposal price.
Right.
On page five.
To assessed value.
Right, can we just change that to assessed values?
And then it comes to the real.
Can, can that come out once it's been addressed initially? Does it need to go in there a second time?
No, but it's always nice to have a little redundancy in here because people sometimes don't read these things as closely as you hope.
Okay, so evaluation criteria, this is where we need to come up with some criteria. There were some criteria that were, the municipal.
Well, did you, did you do on the property description or the layout? Is, are we going to include that whole piece of property?
Well, that's one of the questions. What is, what is, what are you willing to sell? Is it the building, is it the grounds?
The whole.
The whole thing.
The whole.
You do have a letter that was just received today saying that there is.
There's a person interested, or a group interested here.
Yeah, a group that's interested in the property, either whole or part.
So the property description, I think, should stay the same. I think what we should do is in the evaluation criteria, that's where we should talk about whole parcel, 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 and so forth. So the municipal building committee actually came up with some criteria. There are about five of them they had, which were actually pretty good. So one, one is asking for the whole parcel. One is asking for the, the building and leaving other pieces off. So those are things we can, you know, the most advantageous, according to the people who met with the municipal building committee, would be someone who uses the building and takes the building and leaves as much of the vacant lot, as vacant lot as possible. That was their most advantageous. So do we want to continue in that vein?
With the loss of the other property, or that we're not going for the other piece of property in North Hadley, that our RFI was on there, was done for. Do we have a backup plan for a North Hadley fire station?
Right now, no.
Okay.
Not that.
Nor do we have a site requirement for it yet either.
No, we don't have a backup, we haven't managed to plan yet for the parking wreck either.
Okay. Okay. How much interest was there and what piece of parcel was, was requested by other parties? Is, is some people have come forward to us, sent us a letter that said that they were interested. What did that letter say? What did the letter say for a record?
For the record, it said, thank you for sharing the draft RFP of the North Hadley Village Hall. We are assured that the board will issue a final RFP that is in the best interest of the town and its residents. Briefly, we wanted to share the church's interest in the property first. The church is interested in working with the property to maintain the village hall and land as a community and neighborhood asset. The church would seek partners to come up with appropriate uses and a maintenance plan who share the town's interest in preservation and retaining the property as a village focal point.
So for the record, there's people interested in the entire property. So as we list the criteria currently now.
Well, it goes on, it goes on to say, should, skipping a bit a second, should a grander plan not be feasible? The church would like to make the town aware that the church is interested in purchasing a portion of the field if division is possible. This would be used for extended parking and open space.
Okay, thank you.
So now, just so everybody knows who's listening on TV, because the draft RFP was in our packet last week, this is a public document now that we're working off of. Even though it's an RFP, it's, it's a public document because we put it in our book this way. So anyone could ask for it, anyone could see it, anyone can get it as the draft. And then when we formalize it and issue it, it'll go out as the final RFP, just so people don't think we're sending these out to individuals that we know might be interested. It was in our book last week and it is a public document, as a draft.
Okay, so now let's go back to the evaluation of the criteria that have been submitted to you by the buildings committee.
Yes.
Please.
And I actually thought they were in here, but I missed, didn't bring them. So the biggest things they have is use of the property, all, none, or all, part, or some combination thereof. So that would be one evaluation criteria where we'd say, you know, if we could save the, because most of the people in North Hadley, when they were talking to the building committee, they wanted to keep part of the open space. So we can set the first, we can set the first criteria as uses and how they can use it. So if the use is stays the building and there's a use that's, that's compatible with zoning and all of that in there, and then they keep the open space of the, open space as much as they can, and then if there's some parking in there, that's fine, we can say that's the most advantageous. Because one, that means our requirement that we, you know, keep some open space and two, we don't have to take care of the building anymore. Which, not taking care of the building is our biggest requirement. And then protecting the historic preservation is the second. So as I'm talking to you and people think I'm rambling, I'm now remembering the criteria that building committee actually put forward. Use was the first one. Second was maintain historic preservation. Third, third criteria was whether they needed the whole parcel or part of the parcel with their use. And then they kind of came down to the price. I think there was only four they had. Do you remember, Ms. Bridgette?
No, I'm, I'm hoping that as I listen to you, my memory will be refreshed.
Yeah, I apologize for not bringing it. I thought I saw it in here. So that's, that's kind of what we would set up for the criteria. And then so most advantageous would be, you use the parcel, it meets those criteria. And then the next one would be, you can meet the historic preservation restrictions on the building. And then the third one would be.
Whole or part?
Whole or part. And then the fourth one would be price, if we want to choose price. So that means that this is a proposal, so it's not solely dedicated on the price.
Yeah. That makes awfully good sense under the circumstances to break it out that way.
So actually, I'll take the building committee's criteria they put together and email it to everybody and then agree with, and then we'll.
That'd be great.
Integrate it in. So that would take care of the evaluation criteria.
I think it's a $5,000 deposit on a piece of property I've seen.
I think there's a set number. Five percent, isn't it? I mean.
Well, like if you, if you're buying a house, you have to put like $500 down in the house.
Yes, on, under some procurement law, there is a deposit and it's a certain percentage of the total value, but not under 30p. So that's why I put that question mark in there is, do we want to do it? It's not required under this particular section of the law.
It seems that we want some sort of good faith.
I would think so.
Yeah.
So what's that?
Five thousand seems reasonable.
Well, say someone meets all our criteria and their offering price is only a dollar, you're going to make a $5,000 bid?
Yeah.
On?
Twenty-five.
You guys are rough.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, but it needs to be something.
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay. And then the next.
Next town meeting date change?
Well, now the next thing we're going to need to get rid of the best price rules.
Yeah, you need to rewrite the rule for award. I just did it as.
Based on the criteria?
Yeah, so I'll have to rewrite that.
Do you weigh the criteria?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, most advantageous, advantageous, not, are neutral and then not advantageous. Or maybe neutral doesn't even.
Okay, for devil's advocate, if three of the four criteria are met, is that, or it's always?
We have to decide whether, we'll, we'll have the review committee when they get them. They'll look at it and say, was most advantageous, advantageous, not advantageous. And then you kind of balance it out. If one proposal has all four, most advantageous, and no one else has that, then that's probably your best proposal.
Yeah.
And that's the one we'll probably go with.
Alright, checklist.
Okay, and then rule of award, highest price goes out again.
Yeah, so this has to be rewritten because I rather just type it.
Alright. And then on the checklist, the appraised value, if this is all, it has to be changed.
Yep.
And the deposit, we have it. And then, do we want to weigh in on any of the historic stuff? I get a note from one end of the table?
Do we have one?
We want to weigh in on any of the comments of the historic preservation restrictions? So I will send everybody a copy of the building committee's.
Criteria?
Yes.
Once I get that, I'll rewrite this draft. It's been more than a year since I worked on this, so.
Alright. Okay. So is there anyone who has any other comments about our RFP process for North Hadley Hall?
No.
Going once, twice, gone. Okay. Okay, so we'll just go back to number one. Number two, we need to make assignments for town meeting. Have we voted our position on all of them, including the layouts of the road?
No, you haven't.
So do we wish to take a position on article number nine and number 10, which is the acceptance of Laurel and Holly Road?
I would make a motion on number nine, Laurel Drive acceptance at this point.
Okay.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll wait for Holly for next meeting.
Yeah, I don't see how we could vote on that until we.
Okay, so we've done everything but number 10 now, right? Correct, Bridgette?
Yes, I believe so.
And again, simple or two-thirds on those? David?
Joel and I are going back and forth on that one. I think it's a simple.
Simple, it is simple?
Yeah, I think it's a simple.
Because it doesn't count as simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything but simple.
Okay, so article number one. Who wants to speak to it? Does anybody have a preference on what they want to speak to?
No, I can do either or, both, whatever. I didn't know if David was going to speak to those. Don't you normally do the budget ones?
I'd be happy to do that if that's a wish of the board.
Come on, just, I mean, in past practice, what have we done?
Usually, any budget issues come fall to me.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
What's your name, David?
So, good, one and two.
One and two.
Alright. H-Pat?
I think we're cornered.
I guess I'll do that one.
Four and five, I'll do.
Okay.
Well, we're on four. On five, rather. Capital Committee did make a couple of changes to, two of the items on the capital stabilization expenses. One was for the split AC for the library. The library has to switch that out for a roof guard for $2,000 less. And the other is a reduced price on the server room from $29,9 to $25,9. So those are the two changes that will be explained to the voters and we'll handle that in the motion.
And the library, the, the air conditioning units in the article?
Has been removed.
So they've asked, they've asked for that to be deferred in favor of the snow guard.
Okay, but that was in, we voted the air conditioning in?
We voted.
Okay, and then we're taking it out and replacing. Okay, good.
Okay.
I can do the sewer. I can do the sewer water if you want.
You want water and sewer, vote?
Or whatever.
Sure.
They're small.
Yeah.
I can do the next two.
Okay. Who wants to do Holly, then?
Let's give it to John.
Who wants to do Holly?
I'll go for John.
Does he have a conflict of interest there?
Probably.
I'll do Holly. I don't mind doing Holly. Wherever it winds up, I will do Holly.
Okay, Ma, it's yours.
Uh, okay. Parking wreck revolving fund?
Do you want it?
I'll do it. Okay.
I'll do Russell School Stabilization. Are you leaving that for, we should do that.
We need the building committee.
Somebody has to.
The certifying should have talked to that.
Yeah, certifying.
Who, Jerry?
Jerry.
It's a formal.
She's looking for my father.
I do that, too.
That's it, that's it, the other day in Sunderland, I didn't see him here.
Okay. So here we are. We're in the ride along.
Has, did John get any? I mean, I don't really want to short him either.
Well, we'll give him one, a couple when he shows up. If he shows up between now and the next meeting.
I don't think he wants to look like he.
We do have a meeting before the, should be a very short meeting.
Next Wednesday?
On the 21st, or the night of, 21st?
The night before.
Okay.
Wednesday we have a meeting, correct?
Well, that's for you to decide tonight, under new business number two. You are scheduled for it. I do have a couple of items there.
But we could also just have a meeting at 6 o'clock before town meeting.
That would be fine, too.
All right, when we get to that, we'll talk about that.
All right. Waits and measures.
So North Hampton, we were supposed to get some more information about what would be to use the state.
So we talked to the Commonwealth, the Massachusetts Division of Standards, and they are willing but unable to help us out. They currently do not have staff in this area, so they recommended going with an intermunicipal agreement.
So moved.
So my recommendation is that we enter into an intermunicipal agreement right now because our vendors are getting cited for not having this properly sealed waits and measure.
All right, any more discussion?
And then we, and then in the summertime, we revisit this issue and see if we can't get the Commonwealth to resume.
Yeah, this is a one, one-year agreement, correct?
Right.
Actually, it's less than one year, it's only the remainder of this year.
This is a year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Minister of Goals and Objectives.
So as as to add some additional dates to the goals and objectives, there's obviously been a big change in our accounting services here with Gil getting a job in Orange. We've hired Bay State Municipal Accounting Group to take over. They can do some functions that Gil was not able to specifically, they're trained in Vadar reporting, and that was one of the goals and objectives, is that Gil and I would go out to Vadar headquarters and receive additional training. That can now be done on-site, and we don't have to wait for that. So I've been working with Ms. Keegan to come up with something that would have a little bit more specificity in terms of the goals and objectives. I think you had, you asked me for additional dates, which I'm happy to work with you, so I recommend that we sign this tonight and that I report back that any amendments that we agree upon.
And then there was just one minor change, which was under financial reporting and number three, that the provision of regular quarterly statements would also include analysis.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead. I, I think I talked about in my discussion regarding it that I wanted our, to see if we could get a kinder and gentler administrative office. And I think that we just need to change the perception they did and do a better job of helping the public when, when they come in and they ask us for help, whether it's with warrant articles or meeting with committee chairs, to find some common ground with CPA, historical. Let's try to find the differences that we have with committees and mediate them. And I think that's very important because we're starting to lose volunteers to a critical level. And I think we need to do something to amend that and to make everybody's job that comes in a town hall less frustrating. If you need to come in and draft an article, I think we need to do, whether you like the article, hate the article, whatever it is, let's just, let's work and drop and do the best thing that we can to help those people to get that done. And I think that's going to help us with our volunteer issue that we have.
Hey, Jerry?
Yeah.
Just in along that line, the way that we have the performance review laid out, there are the kind of core deliverable, core qualities or whatever that we expect in the position, and then there are the very specific project, more project-oriented goals. So I'm just wondering, I think, I agree with you, but I think what you're getting at is already covered under the top section. Know how the review was broken up into those two parts? Are you, are you asking to have a specific goal?
I'm having an objective.
Because I don't know how we would measure that, is my concern.
So that goes in the first part, which actually isn't in here right now, is it?
No, and it wouldn't be, because this is just the agreement on the four or five additional goals to showing up and doing a good job every day. Like, you know, the communication skills, the stuff that was up above. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the review with me, but you know what I'm talking about because we all did the.
So we actually, we want to approve this piece and then bring that piece back to the next meeting and then go through that and add that on?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Except, except.
I understand what Mr. Vines asked for more.
Because there were bullets under there, and we may want to go through those bullets to get to some of the comments that we did have.
Yep. Okay.
But I think we should make it clear, too, that, you know, the town administrator and the assistant administrative.
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant have, you know, certain jobs and duties that they can do. And, you know, just as the drop of a limb, that, you know, I know that I have heard that they're very positive and helpful when people do come into town hall, that their workload is as such, I think sometimes, that they can't always do it right then and there. And I know that they'll usually get back to people, but we're, you know, sometimes in the middle of a crunch when we're trying to get the budget out at this point, it's hard to do everything. And I do agree with communication with other departments and things like that, that, you know, that is important, you know, important for us to do. Communication always is at the top of the list for us. But I, I think you need, people need to understand, too, that there are certain work that needs to be done at certain times of the year, too.
So we'll bring that back? We'll bring that section back?
Yeah.
And we'll vote on this section for okay?
Perfectly acceptable.
And I think so should be a good conversation about workload.
Yep.
We do need to talk about workload.
All right. So is there a motion to accept this part of the specific goals, objectives?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business number one, we've been asked to do a letter of support on the great sale of Charter to Time Warner.
Again.
Richard?
The other way around, Charter's buying Time Warner.
Yeah, I was kind of hoping that we were going to stay where we were, though.
Pardon me?
I was kind of hoping we were going to stay with Charter and not go to Time Warner.
We're staying with Charter.
Oh, we are?
Yeah. It's Charter that's taking over Time Warner.
So we're not, we're not trading customers anymore?
No, no.
No more customer trading?
No.
What happened to Comcast? Comcast deal fell apart?
They pulled out of their deal with merging with Time Warner.
I was gonna say, I thought the other one was merging with Time Warner. So this is just a, so do we need to provide a letter of support?
No, it's a waste of time.
Do we need to do a letter of support?
Richard?
Richard?
Me?
Yes, do we need to do a letter of support?
Waste of our time.
The slide board is up to you.
So my recommendation is that at some point, we need to draw a line between these international acquisitions and local policy. And I think you clearly are overreaching what the townspeople expect of us by talking about whether you like or dislike a merger, which you would need a room full of Philadelphia lawyers to understand. So I'm saying, don't write the letter.
Okay.
Right there was.
Skip it over.
All right. So calendar, so we have calendars proposed, so we work on, we did have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the 21st.
So is that Todd Ford coming in?
Town meeting is the 22nd.
Yeah, Todd Ford is scheduled to come in, and we have the roof contracts for, the roof contracts for the garage roof to sign that, that evening.
Todd Ford is?
Todd Ford is the executive director of the H. Cog.
This is the whole aggregation thing that blew up? What services are we getting now and all that?
Yeah, they're out of that aggregation business, they dropped that, so.
That's the second part, what services are we getting now?
What services are you getting for your fourth?
What else do we have on the agenda? That's it?
That's it.
The garage, the roof for the garage. And goals and objectives.
Could we do that at 6 o'clock on Thursday?
It's fine by me.
Why don't we see if you can come at 6, and we'll not have a meeting on the 21st?
Sounds good. So not meeting on the 21st?
No.
6 o'clock on the 22nd, we'll post.
Okay.
So our tri-board? We still have the names of the boards. So then, why don't we meet at 6 o'clock on the 4th, just to make sure we get our rest of the town organization through their SWAT presentations?
Okay, and that's the week that I'm gone.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's part of why I was asking if we could see, at least the school's up in front.
Oh, so actually, I may not be at this meeting either. I have to work on that, I think.
Work?
Yeah, well, unless Amherst can do a one-night town meeting.
Oh, you don't time meetings, too?
Yeah, they're doing it on the 11th, on the 2nd, so maybe they can do one night and be done with it. They have a really small agenda, too.
Should we change it to the 11th? Or we can't, because that's, is that Veterans Day?
That's Veterans Day. So you do have the tax classification hearing scheduled for the 4th, and that's kind of another do or die opposition.
We can go, but just make sure John's here that night, Jerry?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Okay, we'll check with, so we'll schedule that.
If you can come, Gilford, you can come.
Yeah, I won't.
Can I accept the streets in Amherst?
No, we don't accept streets in Amherst. So, okay, so the 11-18 is the budget discussion.
So if we don't have too much for tri-board at 6 o'clock, we can go right into our own?
Yes, on our agenda.
On agenda, okay.
So what, meeting's starting at 6:18?
The 4th.
The 4th.
November 4th.
And then I have the 18th.
But truly, it won't probably be a tri-board, it'll probably be a SWAT of the three departments left to be done.
Yes, anybody else?
By, you know, they're certainly welcome to attend. The school is unable, well, we're not able to make the meeting on the 3rd because everybody's going to be at other things, but I doubt the school will be here on the 4th.
And if they could send us their SWAT for the 4th, at least we could have that in hand.
Could we look at doing that on the 18th?
The SWAT?
The schools.
Schools, sure.
I'll ask them.
I'd like to offer something to them as an alternative to what, and explain why we can't make it.
What are they doing on the 4th?
The 3rd.
Thought they were unable to make it on the 4th.
No, they have their SWAT analysis they were doing on the 2nd for their own school committee meeting.
They wanted us to.
I understand.
Go to their meeting on the 2nd.
Okay, so then we're going to have two meetings in November, the 4th and the 18th.
Yeah.
We have our three meetings lined up for the December.
Three?
Yep, the 2nd, 9th, and 16th. And if we continue with the tri-board, it'd be the 9th will be the tri-board. We have three meetings for the January, the 6th, 13th, and 20th.
So question, David and I spent some time together this week looking at the five-year projection and looking at, that David was offering some, no information about some of the numbers, because it's been a while, obviously, since that was put together. Would the 18th be a time to, the November 18th meeting be a time when we could be addressing that?
Budget discussions are.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Be a great time.
Because I think they're, you know, again, some fairly significant things that we just need to deal with upfront.
Okay.
That's good.
We're good with that, yes? All right, so that's our schedule? All right. And then we need to talk about municipal annual meeting.
I go.
Do you want to go?
I do.
All right.
I haven't missed one.
All right.
And Jerry, I got to vote last year, so do you want to be the voter this year?
No. Yes, I'd love to.
So we have two going?
Yes.
All right, so we'll start working with you to set up hotels and times and so forth.
Okay. So we're at the point in the meeting where we ask if there's any announcements.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. On Sunday, October 18th, Kestrel Trust, Land Trust is having the 5K run on the Common, just to let everybody know about that. Anybody with any questions, feel, please feel free to call 549-1097 and ask for any help, that's Christian DeBoer's number. Okay? Also, North Hadley Sugar Shack, the annual tractor parade is this weekend. It's the pumpkin festival, actually, beginning Saturday, October 17th, 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock, with the grandiose tractor parade at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. If you can't make it down to the Sugar Shack, I think everybody knows the route by now, runs down 47 up Huntington Road, across Breckenridge, all the way down to North Hat North, Maple Street, down Stockbridge Road, oh, I'm sorry, cuts back, cuts back towards the Sugar Shack and ends at the Sugar Shack. Usually gets back there about an hour and a half after it starts. Usually about between 75 and 100 tractors, they always have. Please, if you can, attend it.
Anything else? Okay, so we have one more item of business in executive session, does someone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn our regular session and go into executive session for the purpose of litigation.
Roll call vote divine?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Tombo?
Yes.
As Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded to enter into executive session. I state that the discussion of the matter in open session would have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. We will not reconvene after this executive session. Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.